Okay, good evening, everybody. This welcome to the City of Kingston Planning Board Meeting. This is our monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 16, 2021. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I am the Planning Director for the City of Kingston and the Organizer for our virtual meeting. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the Organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hand. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, stating their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 p.m. on Friday, February 12, 2021. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at skhill@kingston-nyc.gov, mailed or placed in the Dropbox outside of City Hall. Written comments have been posted on the city website and provided to all board members in advance of the meeting. We had asked persons wishing to speak to contact the office in advance of the meeting. So as a public hearing is called, those who have already indicated they wish to speak will be called upon first. For all those who are joining by audio and did not pre-register but wish to speak for a hearing matter, please text the following number, 845-443-0416, with your name and the agenda item number and address you wish to speak on. Again, text your name and the item number and address of the public hearing you wish to speak on to 845-443-0416, if you wish to be called to speak for a public hearing. If you have audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number to text is 845-443-0416. As the Organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into attorney-client conference if needed. Materials for this meeting may be found on the City of Kingston website, www.kingston-nyc.gov. Once on the homepage, click on Government and Services tab, select Planning Projects, and then Planning Board. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order at 6:06 p.m.
Thank you, Suzanne. Welcome, everybody, to the February 16, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. We'll do an introduction of board members and other folks here. First, my name is Wayne Platt, I'm the chairman. We also have Charles Palaco, Vice Chairman.
I'm here.
Jacobson.
Yeah.
Matt Gillis. Matt, you're with us, right?
Yes, Matt, you're muted.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. We also have.
Here.
And we have, as you know, Suzanne Cahill is our Planning Director. We have the Assistant Planner, Kyla D-Day. We have Alderman Don Toleman, who is the Common Council liaison to the Planning Board. And we also have Daniel Gartenstein, Assistant Corporation Counsel for City of Kingston. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the January 19, 2021 Planning Board Meeting transcript and decisions. Everybody's received a copy of that. Does anybody have any questions or email, excuse me, or additions or deletions that they think should be there? I've only getting four pictures there, so anybody's raising their hand, we're good?
I'm good.
Chuck.
All right. At this time, I will make a motion that we adopt the January 19, 2021 Planning Board Meeting transcript and decisions. That is Wayne Platt, do I have a second?
Okay.
By Chuck Palaco, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. All right, moving into public hearings. Item number two is, let me see here, what time is it? It is 88 Abiel Street in Perrin's 90 Abiel Street. It's a special permit renewal to operate Bed and Breakfast. Section Block and Lot is 56.43-5-4. Seeker Determination Zone RT. It's in the Rondott Historic District, also a heritage area. Ward 8, Maria and Hendrick Dyke are the applicants and owners. Is there anybody besides the applicants or owners, Sue, who wish to speak tonight?
No one has pre-registered and no one has sent a text.
Okay. Can we unmute Maria then?
She has, Maria, unmute yourself, she's unmuted.
Hi, Maria.
Hi.
How was everything?
Very good, I'm wearing the mask because I'm in my son's office. He's helping, he helped me set up everything.
All right. Okay, so we're here for an annual renewal. Any changes going on down there at the Bed and Breakfast?
Everything is the same.
Okay. I have a note here that, and I want to know if they're associated with your Bed and Breakfast there. There's been some parking on the sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk for your establishment. You know anything about this?
Say it again.
Are there folks parking on the sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk who are using the Bed and Breakfast?
No, no. They always park cars to sleep or down the parking lot.
Okay.
Maria, we, the staff had sent you a email late this afternoon with photos that were submitted to us. Vehicles, I believe there were three of them parked facing into your building, but so they were partially on your property, but then also extending out over the sidewalk and into the city street.
Well, that, that has, we always had, have been granted in for that. They're always, they're always allowed to park there. And, and it was obviously like basically the first sidewalk is included in that. That has always been the same.
Is it, were we talking about when the flower shop was open, they were allowed to park there?
Yeah. And all parked our cars there. And then, there's actually a note in the, when we got the building covered in the very beginning, that, you know, when the, when the city owned it, the police would park their own cars there, whoever the city. And they say, it's granted in that we are allowed to park there.
The only.
Because the problem is, when, when they made the city, when they changed the street, they took more away from our side, they even took three feet away. So now, of course, it was more, in a way for us, more problematic, but.
I, I think part of the, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, the original approval was, the parking was because we waited, did we? Because of the proximity to a city lot?
Yes.
Okay, so Maria, that's, that's, I know that the configuration along the Beal Street has been changed, and that's unfortunate, but. So, you know, we're not gonna, if you could just stay on your staff down there who are, that they're not gonna be allowed to block the sidewalk. You know, I know that situation has changed, but we're gonna need, need that to happen, okay? Can you take care of that for us?
Okay.
Okay. And Sue, that's the only thing really jumping out, right?
That was the only issue, correct?
Yeah, so Maria, take care of that. And you said no other changes going on. Anybody from the board have any questions? Okay. So, under Seeker, this is a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required at this time. So, at this time, I will make, I will make a motion that we approve item number two for a period of one year, making a note that parking will not be allowed in front of the building in all original conditions carried forward. That's a motion.
May I interrupt?
Yes, Maria.
Okay. We could park still if it's not on the sidewalk. Instead of having the cars facing in, would do the car sideways, we could at least that way fit two cars in there. If the sidewalk is not blocked, then we should be allowed to park.
Well, I, I don't know if that was part of the original agreement there to have parking in front of the building, you know, like that. I know that there was, there was sure parking going on for, like when the florist was there.
It was before the florist.
Right, you can, you can park in front of the building, Maria. The issue is that you cannot block the sidewalk.
Yes, yes.
That is, that is the concern. The vehicle parked there, as long as they are not over the sidewalk, is fine.
Because that, that's important, you know, because that way we're doing sideways, and then the sidewalk would still be available.
Yeah, it may, it may be tight getting two cars in there, I'm not, I'm not, you know.
Well, if you do it sideways, you could fit a total of two, because now, right now, we may be fit four cars, actually.
So this, blocking the sidewalk, that's all. All right?
All right.
All right, so, all right, so we have a motion for, to, for that approval for one year with all original conditions carried forward and the not blocking the sidewalk. Do I have a second on that? Charles Palaco with a second on that. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes, a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
That is approved. Thank you, Maria, we'll see you in another year.
All the best, take care, thank you.
All right. Item number three is 241-267 Rear Albany Avenue. Special permit renewal to construct and operate a community solar project. Section Block and Lot is 48.317-1-2. It's Zone Triple R, Ward 2. Radio Kingston is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owners wishing to speak on item number three?
This is Jeff Irish. Good evening. Hi, this is Jeff Irish. This is Jeff Irish, I'm the engineer on the project, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, I think we're gonna go right to you. Are you the only one representing tonight, sir?
I believe so, yes.
All right, so construction's not completed yet fully, right?
That's correct, it's in process.
Okay, how, how, how much longer you think you got on that to get that up and running?
Uh, we should probably be finished with our portion of the community solar project within the next week or two. We've been delayed by the weather, obviously, this winter. It's made things a little more difficult. The second part of the project, which is the smaller onsite array for the radio tower, to actually power the radio tower and provide battery backup, will be completed probably within about another three weeks from now. That'll leave only the three-phase line work by Central Hudson. And they're bringing in, they're reconduct, multi-conducting is what they call it. They're changing a single-phase line to three-phase, and we're working with them on some of those details. Unfortunately, I'm not able to control their timing.
Well, I know. But it's, it, you know, in general, it seems like the, the, the construction has moved pretty, pretty well for where we are with things, right? Good.
Yeah, all, all of the solar panels are installed, all of the rackings installed. The inverters and electrical equipment are largely complete. We're just, at this point, we're pulling wire, making final connections.
Okay. Anybody have any questions from the board? Sue, do you have any questions?
No. I am, Kyla, can you just take some notes? I'm trying to help some people get in that are having difficulty.
Sue, I mean, are you comfortable with a one-year renewal on this? I think we're gonna ask the rest of the board, too.
That, that was our recommendation, Wayne, because the, the project is not yet fully constructed. That would be to allow them to be up and functional for a year, and then we would review it and determine a.
Okay.
Again.
Everybody seems good with that on the board? Okay. And under Seeker, Sue, do we need to do it, it's an unlisted, is that, we need to, or has that already been taken care of, right? That's, that's already done.
This would. I'm sorry, Wayne, it's a type-two.
Okay. All right, so type-two under Seeker, so no further review of the board is required. Thank you, Kyla. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number three for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. That's a motion, do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
As a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
And Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Jeff, thank you for stopping tonight.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, still in public hearings. Item number four is 200 North Street. It's a special permit amendment for additional hospitality, spa, and restaurant accommodations, as well as additional parking for a new entrance off of Linsley Avenue. Section Block and Lot is 48.84-1-4. Seeker Determination Zone RFH and Triple R. It's a heritage area and coastal zone. Ward 9, HBY, QOZBLLC is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides those folks who are applicants or owners wishing to speak on 200 North Street?
Wayne, we did have Tanya Garment. Is online to speak.
All right, I guess we'll unmute her.
Tanya, can you unmute yourself?
Should be star six if you're trying to unmute from the phone. Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Thank you. So, hi, Tanya Garment, 102 Ford Street. I just wanted to make sure that you guys continue to hear the feedback and read all the written comments. I believe that there's a few written comments. I understand that this is a, a large master plan that was, has been presented, and I appreciate, I think it's great that the applicants have given the future view. Please make sure that you use our boards and commissions for feedback on this environmentally sensitive piece of land and take the context of the land around it into account. And also, the trail, the Empire State Trail, I think that the access to that is very important. And, and really, the, the natural life around, around the property, how that will be affected, as well as drainage and all those other many serious considerations. But enthusiastically leaving these comments, because I think, I think that there's some good stuff here. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Tanya. Anybody else?
I do not have anyone else, Wayne.
Okay. We do have a letter from SECPRA, right? And that's, that comment is available on, on our website, too, associated with that property, correct, Sue?
Correct. You mean?
Uh, yes, oh, yes, I don't know why, because I'm looking at reference SECPRA, yes, from SHIF, I'm sorry. Okay, if there's nobody else, who's from, who do we have from?
Joe Ariel.
Yeah, this is Joe Ariel. I do know that Kevin McManus got in a little late, so Sue and Kyla, I don't know if you recognize his number, but if you could, you know, make sure that he's able to speak, I'll just quickly frame what I think we're doing now. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're, we think that tonight you're in a position to declare your lead agency status. Leaving enough time has passed there without objection. We would ask that you refer the project to the County Planning Board for their recommendations. And the planning department, Sue and her staff, have, you know, provided some additional comments on our submission, to which we'll be responsive between now and the next meeting. I can also say that with respect to some of the legal issues, I've been in regular contact with Mr. Gartenstein, and, and we are working through them as well as with Kevin Bryant with respect to the North Street access in particular. So, we, we continue to move forward. I'll certainly give Kevin an opportunity to speak on any of the technical issues that, you know, that, that he thinks are, are worth informing the board about. And then, of course, we'll answer, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Kevin, are you able to get in there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, hi, good evening, folks. I, I really didn't have anything to add other than that, Joe. I, I think that we've got a, a set of plans that's being reviewed, as I understand, by the planning department and the city engineer. And Sue and I went through a, a list of, of issues that we need to address, and we aim to make a submission this coming week for, in time for the deadline for the next Planning Board meeting to address those, those issues. And I think that, that will enable the board to move ahead.
Yes, Kevin, this is Wayne, thank you. Good, good to hear from you and you and Joe. Appreciate you being, you know, you're, you're being responsive to the comments from the Planning Board and the public. I know you guys are still working with North Street access issues and some other issues that are outstanding. And yes, we are looking to declare ourselves lead agency. In fact, Sue has prepared a resolution for that. And as we move, move on, we're gonna look to keep the public hearing open, all right? So we can still get some more public comment on that as, as this is moving along. But, you know, at this point, I just think that we're, you know, we're looking to just declare lead agency and table and, and wait for the rest of the process to develop, so.
We want to refer as well, Wayne, to the County Planning Board.
Gonna refer, yes, yes, okay.
So, I can start with a proposed resolution.
Anybody have any questions or comments from the board before me? Okay, all right, all right, Sue, thank you, go ahead.
Okay. Resolution of the City of Kingston Planning Board reaffirming lead agency in the review of 188 and 200 North Street, SBL 5628-3-23 and 48.84-1-4, in accordance with the seeker process under 6 NYCRR, Part 617. Whereas, the applicant has submitted a site plan amendment application and a completed Part 1 of the full environmental assessment form to the City of Kingston Planning Board to add additional cabins, spa treatment facilities, pathways, and access road and parking off of Linsley Avenue, fencing, site improvements, connection to the Empire State Trail parking, and other site improvements in Perrin's, the action. And whereas, the project is located at 188 and 200 North Street, Kingston, New York, in Perrin's SBL 56.28-3-23 and 48.84-1-4. And whereas, the designation of a lead agency and a determination of the significance of the action on the environment must be made in order to comply with the New York State Environmental Conservation Law in Perrin's, the Seeker Act, and the regulations promulgated thereunder in Perrin's, the regulations by the New York Department of Environmental Conservation. And whereas, the board recognized the action as Type 1 under Seeker and has continued its role as lead agency under previous applications with notifications to all identified, involved, and interested agencies as provided by the applicant and planning staff. And whereas, the Planning Board intends to continue as lead agency in the review of the current amended application as there have been no objections received during the previous declarations of lead agency and determinations of significance. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Kingston Planning Board as follows. Section 1, that pursuant to 6 NYRCC, Part 617, the City of Kingston Planning Board hereby affirms its role as lead agency in the seeker review, environmental review of the action as described above. Section 2, that all identified involved agencies will be notified of the Kingston Planning Board decision to act as lead agency. And Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Well, first, let me say that I'm deeply troubled by the fact that I'm not able to read that resolution. I usually do, but thank you for taking that here. So, thank you, Sue, so that is, I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt that resolution. This is Wayne Platt, do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. Okay, all in favor, we have Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco? Give me a thumbs up, Chuck.
Chuck.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. So we're gonna refer this to the county, and we're also gonna keep open the public hearing. And I don't think we have anything else left to talk about with this item tonight, because, Robert, you got something? Sorry.
I just saw a note, are we going to put this on for next Planning Board meeting? Or do we want to have a special Planning Board meeting just for this topic after county comments are received back?
I can, once the county comments are received back, we can send out a note. If the board is agreeable, we can set something up. The timing, the county meets the first Wednesday of the month. So we'd have to look at the timing of that and whether or not it would be efficient to do so or just keep it at our regular meeting in March.
I think we just, when we look at the March meeting, there's a lot to discuss on this project. So, if we have a rather full agenda, I'd rather me personally do a special meeting and just knock this one out.
Okay.
This is, this is Joe Ariel, and, and I do want to mention that certainly the board will control its own agenda, and you'll, you'll do what's best for the board overall. I do appreciate it being brought up and the possibility being left open, because we do, we do have some, some timing issues ourselves, as you can certainly well imagine with springtime around the corner, we hope. And so, obviously, we want those county comments, or we can't make the progress we want, that we all want to make. But I do appreciate it being raised and the possibility being leftovers, or left open. So, thank you, and we'll, we'll see where we stand.
And this is Wayne Platt. I, if we can get another meeting in, a special meeting to deal with this, I think Robert's got a good point. If we got a full agenda with, with everything else, it would behoove us to maybe move this to a special, a special meeting. And I think, you know, virtual, having virtual meetings, I think helps that, you know. People can make those meetings, I think, more readily than they can, you know, in a regular special meeting. So, if we can make that happen, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel about that. I don't know if it, if it entails having a doodle poll go out, but if, Sue, if you want to work with, with Kevin and Joe to find out what works with them for a special meeting and send out a doodle poll, maybe we can make that happen. I'm, I'm agreeable to it.
And I personally would, would, would like to see a special meeting in March, and obviously, you have meeting notice requirements. So, if you do send out a doodle poll, maybe we can set that up and make it happen.
Okay.
Everybody else good with that on the board?
Wayne, Chuck, I, I concur with, with Rob, it will be a long meeting.
Yeah, okay. And Matt and Kevin, you're good, too, with that?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. So we'll see if we can make that happen, all right? Good point there, Robert. Okay, so.
Wayne, we do need a motion to refer to the county and to table this matter and continue the public hearing. The resolution only addressed the issue of lead agency.
Okay, can I throw that into a, a motion to table and put all that other information in there?
Yes, you can.
All right, so at this time, I will make a motion that we table item number four. Also to refer to the county. also to refer to the county planning board and to keep the public hearing open at this time. That is a motion. Do I, Robert?
Kevin.
By Robert Jacobson. Uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt as a yes, Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted. Kevin and Joe, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, folks.
Take care, folks.
Bye-bye.
All right, item number five is 264 Lucas Avenue. It's a site plan to construct a multifamily apartment complex consisting of four buildings with 47 units and related site improvements. Section block and lot is 56.88 dash 4 dash 7. Speaker determination, zone R4, Ward 1, SSLI Holdings LLC is the applicant owner. I know we have a number of speakers tonight on this. Um, and I know we've had some public comment submitted via emails and we've all received those copies. So Sue, who, we can see who's gonna go first on this.
Okay, um, first of all, I do want to say I did not uh, get any um, text messages from people who wish to speak. So I would like to repeat that number again for persons who might have called in late and did not hear it. If you did not pre-register, please text your name right now to 4430416. That is an 84 way, um, 845 area code. Um, so it's 8454430416.
And while we're waiting for Peter and Gabby Diccy around here, are they gonna, are they, they want to speak?
Um, I have, their representative has submitted.
Wayne?
Yes, right?
I'm just gonna recuse myself on this one for the same reason set forth in the last meeting.
Yes, okay. So Robert Jacobson will be, will be recusing himself at this time. Okay, um, all right, so who, we're just waiting for.
Okay, um, well, we do have some pre-registered. Uh, Kenneth Gilligan, if you can unmute and speak.
I'm unmuted. Good evening, Chairman Platt and all your board members. Uh, I represent a number of residents on Bluestone Court. Um, my clients purchased their homes in large part because it was situated on a cul-de-sac in a quiet, single-family neighborhood. The apartment entrance and exit is currently planned to be located in close proximity to one of my client's front yards with daily vehicle trips expected to be approximately 300 per day. This is being proposed even though it appears that the applicant has right to enter and exit the property directly from Lucas Avenue. And apparently, the applicant sold a parcel on Lucas Avenue, which would have given them additional frontage. Uh, so they basically, in my opinion, created a self, created hardship uh, trying to get access through Bluestone Court. Um, I sent a letter to the board, uh, February 9th, and uh, in that I asked that, that a project of this density magnitude should warrant the long-form EAF with more specific project information related to traffic, water, demand, sewer demand, stormwater, and impacts on the character of the neighborhood. And there are other issues that are addressed in that letter. Um, and I'm sure you all will read that and have some thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilligan.
The next speaker is Sandy Perna. Sandy, if you are on by phone, um, try uh, star six to unmute yourself. Okay.
Oh.
Hello?
Hi, am I here?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Perna. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns. I live at 258 Lucas Ave in the White Colonial on the left side as you turn onto Bluestone Court. I object to this development the way it's presently proposed at this location for all the reasons that my neighbors and I expressed in letter and questions I went to uh, at the last planning board meeting. I just wanted to address two particular concerns tonight, uh, community character and traffic. Um, in reading the short, um, the, the short EAF, question six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing build or natural landscape? I believe it is not. Um, I referenced uh, New York State Workbook explaining what community character means. And uh, quote from the workbook, "Community character is frequently an important aspect of a community that wishes, that it wishes to maintain. Sometimes a community desires to improve or enhance its community character. These goals are often described in a comprehensive plan as they are in the 2025 comprehensive plan and the open space plan." Um, this development is not consistent with either of those plans. It certainly is not improving quality of life or surrounding neighborhood. Um, and it doesn't seem to enhance community character. And in my opinion, it introduces a very different level of activity that currently exists, from what it currently exists. Um, it certainly impacts visual character and intensity of land use, both of which are mentioned in the New York State, excuse me, New York State SEA Workbook as important considerations when deciding on new developments. The second thing I want to address is question eight on that short EAF, which says, "Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels?" I believe it will. Um, it's suggested in the workbook that a table might be used to help understand traffic increases. However, it goes on to say, and quote, "It's not meant to be used as anything more than a guide." And even says that projects that don't show significant traffic numbers on the table might still negatively impact traffic in the area. To me, certainly five to six times increase in traffic on our street on a daily basis, a dead-end cul-de-sac has a significant impact. On a personal note, the way this is proposed now by this developer, the exit road sits only six feet off my backyard property line for the entire 150-foot frontage of my yard. Six feet with no screening whatsoever. So potentially 96 cars could be going by my backyard on a daily basis. Um, so that is just two of the concerns I have. I appreciate your listening to me and uh, taking the time to hear this out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perna.
The next persons to speak would be Carol and John Dowley.
Uh, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to, um, to speak uh, about this development to you. Um, Carol and I reside at 262 Lucas Avenue. We have lived here since 1996 before Bluestone Court was built. At that time, um, I want to state that we were not opposed to the responsible development that took place. And we find ourselves here 24 years later, still open to responsible development. However, we are opposed to Bluestone Commons because of the density and size of the project, four buildings, 47 apartments. And feel that just because the zoning regulations allow for such a development, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that it should take place. Here are a few of the reasons we are opposed to the Bluestone Commons proposed development. The proposal includes adding 96 parking spaces, 47 additional residences with sole access off the cul-de-sac Bluestone Court. Bluestone Court was originally designed to accommodate 10 homes. Uh, that was in 2004, 2005. It seems to us that the developers are attempting to shoehorn uh, their project into a 2.7 acre area with insufficient capacity to sustain the impact. Among the issues, um, as Sandy stated, uh, traffic is a key one. 96 parking spaces translates into five to six times the current amount of vehicle traffic entering and exiting Bluestone Commons onto Bluestone Court and subsequently onto Lucas Avenue. This will contribute to increased traffic on Boulder, Merrillina, and other streets near the two local schools, Edson and Bailey. And this will be especially significant during rush hour periods. Additionally, there are currently no sidewalks on Lucas Avenue for several blocks toward Washington Avenue on either side and none going towards the town of Ulster on, on either side as well. In addition to the traffic issues, the short environmental assessment form, part two, completed by the developers is problematic at a minimum. These items in particular are concerning to us. Uh, item number seven, "Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies and public-private wastewater treatment utilities?" And number 10, "Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?" Both of these items were checked indicating that no or small impact uh, may appear. Uh, based on the dialogue we heard between the developer and the city planner at the January planning board meeting, it was apparent that there had been no contact between the developers and the city departments, including Public Works, Water, and City Engineers. Uh, no contact at that time. So in summary, we reiterate that we are not opposed to development of the area um, and, and, and suggest a neighborhood of affordable homes that would complement the existing neighborhood, reduce the impact on the infrastructure, and contribute to the Kingston Comprehensive Plan of 2025. Um, thank you, board members, for um, taking the time to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Tanya Garment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. Tanya Garment, 102 Worth Street. Um, so this property uh, is um, one of the, one of the entrance is on a cul-de-sac. If I understand the, the um, plans correctly, there's also an exit onto Lucas Avenue. Um, the, the entrance and exit on Bluestone Court, um, I think there is a positive in it being on the end of Bluestone Court that's closer to Lucas Avenue, um, as opposed to if it had, had the ability to connect farther on. It's going to, um, these cars are going to more closely reach Lucas Avenue. I agree that um, this should have a thorough seeker process and that um, the city uh, departments, there's a number of city departments and boards and commissions that should be consulted in th- this project. Um, we have a Complete Streets Advisory Council and a, a Conservation Advisory Council, and I hope that they, they will have the opportunity to fully chime in on this. Um, our engineer has recently started um, reviewing traffic control devices in the City of Kingston according to a pretty recent, I think it was 2019, um, um, change that the common council instituted on how they address um, changes in the way that traffic is controlled. Um, and part of that requires the engineer to look at the NACTO Design Guidelines, um, National Association of City Transportation, something, anyway. It's, it's, it's kind of urban-based, which is appropriate for even this single-family-only neighborhood. Um, I think that it is uh, more important for us as a City of Kingston. Um, this is also something that's referenced in the comprehensive plan, to be looking at the architecture, the way that the public space is shaped more than um, what the uses are inside of a building. Nobody should be um, uh, not, not able to live in a neighborhood simply because they can't afford an entire house. That's not fair. Um, and there are other apartment buildings in the neighborhood. Um, but I think that um, there's a reason that we have a seeker review. Um, and there's a reason that we have boards and commissions. Um, and I hope that you will um, utilize those in doing this project responsibly. Um, uh, cul-de-sacs are inherently bad for connectivity. They're a sort of, by design, they make it so that it's, there's not a lot of outlets. So cul-de-sacs are not, not very good design for cities. Um, so this is an instance where we unfortunately have a street that dead ends. Um, so it's gonna take some extra care to figure out how to work that. Um, but uh, I'm glad to see that more housing units will be um, developed. And I'm glad that we have, although I don't think it's um, was, I think that it could use an improvement, we do now have an affordable housing requirement. So please do remember that these developers will be required to, um, or actually, is that over five? Anyway, that might be applicable here. Thanks very much.
Okay. Um, and the next speaker I have is Barbara Scott. Barbara Scott? If you're on the phone, uh, can you unmute yourself using star six? Okay, um, I don't have any other speakers and I didn't receive any texts, so that is my listing.
Okay, um, so we're gonna, just, just before we move to speak with the, uh, with the applicants, I mean, I, we're still gonna keep this public hearing open, right? Um, uh, so we can accept more comments from the public. And all the comments will, that have been submitted will be uh, available on our website as well. Uh, Luke, are you there?
Yeah, we're here. We're here, hi, board. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
You've uh, you have submitted amended plans, have you? Is that?
Yeah, so we submitted um, revision one, which incorporates all the staff notes received along with um, comments from all the city officials, including city engineer, DPW zoning. So um, as we get, we're in contact with all, all of those departments. Um, they were submitted late last week, so I'm sure you haven't had a chance to review them. But um, as you do again, any notes compiled, uh, we're happy to review and incorporate.
And the departments that you've submitted those to, obviously the engineering department, right? Uh, DPW Fire Department, was, was water involved as well with that?
Um, water is not right now, no.
And we're still.
We have, we have a list of, of additional folks reading the plans too this week. It was a Friday.
There, there, okay. All right, so um, we're still waiting for some feedback from them too, Sue, right? On, on the new submissions?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Um, and, and revision one, Sue, is available right now on, on our website, correct?
Yes, everything uh, that we have received in the office, um, both from the applicants and from the public in the way of comments has been uploaded to the city's website.
Okay. Um, also, this um, the uh, this is gonna be submitted to the, or referred, excuse me, referred to the Ulster County Planning Board. We still have to do that. Um, I'm gonna leave it up to the board members here. Is any, any questions? I mean, I've got some questions, but um, anybody have any, anything right now that they have for the applicants? One of the comments that seems to be prevalent amongst, you know, the, the document, the emails we've received, the folk, the folks who have, who have spoken tonight, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I think I'm inclined to agree with them. Maybe we should look into doing. Maybe we should look into doing a long-form environmental impact study on the E I F. So does anybody, I think it will help allay some of the folks' concerns about what's going on, you know, with the project. It doesn't mean it's a showstopper. It just means that it's a more in-depth look to see what's going on there. And I would also be inclined to, and again, leaving it up to the board, also looking into doing a traffic study as well, having a consultant be brought on board with that. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Wayne, I think those are great ideas, and they should be done.
Hey, that's Matt, right? You're, Matt, I'm only getting.
Correct, yes, Matt.
Chuck, go ahead.
Kevin Roach, I fully agree, Wayne, both long-form and obviously the traffic is a major concern with that number of cars, so I fully agree.
Right.
Wayne.
I I also agree with you and the other board members.
One, two, okay, we have four on that. All right, so I think that that's, I think that we're going to put, when we, you know, we'll put that in the form of a motion when we're about ready to conclude this applicant tonight, this item tonight. And Sue, do you have anything else you want to, you want to add in there?
Just go, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I do have the updated plans if anyone wanted me to put them on the screen or wanted any explanation of what's changed.
Okay.
It's up to you. If not, you can look at them, you know, they are online. I'll send them out to everybody.
All right, thank you. And one other thing before I forget. I know there's a concern about screening and how it looks for Lucas Avenue and, you know, for Blue Stone Court. I would also be inclined to maybe have a visual representation, you know, a virtual representation about how how the the complex will look from Lucas Avenue, different, from different vantage points there, as well as Blue Stone Court. I know you've got some robust screening proposed there, fellas?
Yeah, we can do, we can do a more thorough visual street view, rendering, three-D renderings, and that sort of thing. That's, that's not too difficult to put together, so we can try and solve it, does that kind of thing on board.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, this is Matt Rudicoff, Environmental Consultant. Hi, everyone. So what we've submitted so far does not include the landscape plan, and so that will certainly show the more robust screening. And we wanted to not do that until we had some indication from the board that the orientation of the buildings, you know, was more or less, you know, in keeping with what your vision was. Because we didn't want to really do the landscape until we knew where the buildings were going to be.
Yeah.
If you want that landscaping plan in our next submission, that would be something we'd be happy if the board could address regarding the layout of the buildings.
Matt, this is Wayne again, and I misspoke when I said you have a robust plan. I think that was more of a, you know, a verbal commitment to address the screening and not actually something that was, you know, formally proposed at this point. So I misspoke. So, yeah, so when we get a, you know, a better idea of where we'd like this project to, you know, how it develops, we can certainly look into the, into the screening, the robust screening that you've just talked about. So. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Wayne, I did get a text from a member of the public asking that the traffic study be looked at while school is open, during the open hours of school, to include those numbers. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, and Sue, you can, I mean, if we if we do go, go ahead with that, and I'm sure, I'm sure we will with that traffic study, that's something you can set up with, at staff level with, with the applicants, correct? To make sure that that's done in an approved manner for you?
Correct.
Okay, so. Let me see here. All right, anything else, Sue, you have?
I do not at this time, no. We do want to try and look at a date also for a site visit. I know the weather has been making it difficult. And while we might not be able to actually walk the entire parcel, we can at least get a feel for the neighborhood, you know, walk on the streets and get some good viewpoints from, you know, the surrounding area. So if members can, please send me their calendars for next week. We'll see what the storm at the end of this week brings us that they're predicting, but like to do something sooner than later.
Okay. And Ciro, Luke, and Stefan, you can, you can make that happen, right, in a timely manner?
Yeah, anytime.
I would absolutely coordinate with the applicants and ask them to be there as well.
Okay.
If I may just add one, one more thing about traffic. Certainly, we're going to provide you with with some more information about traffic. But in terms of what a traditional traffic impact analysis is, this amount of traffic is going to be far below a level of traffic that can be measured. But we'll provide something that's going to really give the board some more comfort about the level of traffic. And if I just may say, you know, the first speaker, when he mentioned three hundred cars per day, that's, that's, that's an accurate number, approximately. But but it's really important for the board to see that even if those three hundred cars are in eight, are in ten hours, you know, they all occur in ten hours, that's thirty cars per hour. That's one car every two minutes. So it's, you have to keep that amount of traffic in mind when we're doing this. But we will provide something that gives you substantially, hopefully substantially more comfort regarding traffic. And we take your comment to heart.
All right, thanks, Matthew. Anything else from the board? All right, so at this time, I will make the motion that we table item number five. We're going to keep the public hearing open. We are going to look for the long form on the E I F. We're going to also refer this to the Ulster County Planning Board. We're going to have a traffic study performed. And we're going to have some visuals done from Lucas Avenue and Blue Stone Court from various points there. And Sue, you can get with the applicants on what you think would be good vantage points there, right? Did I miss anything on that?
No, you got everything.
So that is a motion. This is Wayne Platt. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Kevin Roach.
By Kevin Roach, all in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Fellas, much, we'll be, everybody will be in touch with each other, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night. Matthew, take care.
Thank you, Wayne.
All right. Okay, we're going to welcome Robert Jacobson back. Back in.
Good night, everybody. Good night, Robert Jacobson.
All right, okay, Robert's back in. Okay, moving on to new business. Item number six is One Miller's Lane. It's a site plan to convert an office to a residential unit in an existing multifamily apartment complex. Section block and lot is fifty-eight point, excuse me, fifty-six point eighty-nine dash two dash fifty-six. Secret determination zone R four, Ward one, Parkview R J L L C. In parentheses, Rory Kurz is the applicant owner. Who do we have representing? Charlie, are you here for that?
Yes, I am.
And Mr. Kurz is here as well.
Yes, sir.
So go ahead, guys. Tell us what you're proposing here. Todd, are you going to throw something up there for us to look at?
Rory, would you like me to take the floor, or do you want to do it?
You could start, and then I'll chime in if if these things needed.
Okay. All right, what we have is an existing structure that's already outfitted as it could be used as an apartment immediately. There's no work that needs to be done. It's a separate, small building. It's a cottage, for lack of a better word, that's been used as an office for Parkview Apartments. And it's, if you see, it's highlighted in red on the map. It's located to the rear of Camelot Manor and right, right on the other side of the property line from Camelot Manor. And it's to the left of, as you, as you face the Parkview Apartments, it's faced all the way to the left. And it's a small two-hundred-and-forty-two-square-foot cottage with a seventy-five-square-foot front porch. And what we're asking is fairly straightforward. There's no need for the apartment or for the office anymore. And rather than just let the building sit there, we'd like to convert it to a, to an efficiency apartment.
Back to business here. Okay. See here. There we go, okay.
It's, yeah, it's, you could, it's set back. You can see it to the left of the white building.
It seems pretty straightforward to me, right?
Yes.
Board member, I think.
Straightforward.
Parking is, any, parking's not an issue. It's, it's.
The conversion of the office to the apartment does not trigger an increase in the amount of off-street parking. So there's no off-street parking issue. There would be, however, a recreation fee required since this is an additional unit on an existing multifamily project.
Oh, that's part of the the local law?
Correct.
Even though it's one unit?
Correct, because the existing multifamily complex has more than four residential units already. So it's adding additional units.
That two thousand dollars?
Three.
Three, okay.
It's a one-time fee.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions from the board? All right. Charlie, this is going to be an easy one, isn't it?
I think so.
All right, under seeker, this is a type-two action. So no further review of the board is required with that. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number six, indicating the recreation fee that would need to be submitted. Board policy six, I'm going to read off your stuff here, Sue. Board policy thirteen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen A, twenty-two. And I believe the facility already has a Knox box, so we're, we could take that off, I think.
But is that, well, we need to confirm that. Rory, do you have a Knox box on the facility?
What do you mean by a Knox box?
It's a lock box that has a key, and the fire department has the master key to it. And inside are the keys to the building so that they can access without breaking down windows or doors.
Let me, let me look that up right now, Sue. Hold on.
Okay. And you're probably already landlord-registered, correct, with the building safety division?
Yes, we've been.
Right, I assume so.
Yes, they do have a Knox box. It's at the left of where the, where the main office door is there, so there is one there.
Okay.
Right? Okay, all right, so that is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Kevin.
By Kevin Roach, all in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much. A pleasure as always. Stay safe.
Have a good night. Thank you very much, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Anything else, Sue, we have before the, any business?
No, I do not.
Anybody have anything to bring up from the board? Okay. At this time, this is Wayne Platt. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks. And we'll be looking for those calendars and doodle polls for Blue Stone Commons and the brick, excuse me, the Brickyard, so keep, keep, keep your eyes open for that. Thank you, Sue and Kyle.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.